Evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Oh, that was nice. This is the rescheduled Board Regular Board meeting that was supposed to be January 22nd and today, January 25th. It's called to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Williams. Trustee Wilson.
Here.
Trustee Brooks.
Present.
Trustee McMuller. Trustee Payton.
Here.
Trustee Brown. And Mary Truss.
Present. Please join me with my.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republican Party, to the United States, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Approval of minutes. Yep. A minute. Yeah. Approval of minutes for December 2nd.
11th.
So moved by trustee Brooks, second. Sorry, did it second by trustee? Hmm, and then. Payton? Sorry. Bro, um, any comments? Comments? Correctors? Hearing none. Roll call.
Trustee Wilson.
Epstein, I wasn't here.
Trustee Brooks.
Both sides.
Trustee Payton.
Uh.
Mary Truss.
Both sides. Thank you. General public, uh, this time, Ms. Phyllis Sanders.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, trustees. I have a question for, um, the Chief of Fire, Mr. Chelios. Hi. Um, there are a number of fire hydrants that are non-operational, um, up and down Blackhawk, there's one on Union, and I'm sure there are several others throughout the village. What is being done to correct that issue? Because you can't put out a fire if there's no water pressure.
We are aware of the fire hydrant issue. Uh, from a village standpoint, those hydrants are owned and maintained by Aqua Water Company. So they advise us if hydrants are broken, we report if we find them broken to them. They've also been tracing down and tracking and fixing a bunch of water main breaks in the area over the last two months. So as they repair water mains, we again remind them that hydrants are out of service as well.
Do they give you a target date for when it would be fixed?
They, not, not necessarily. They've, uh, they keep telling us that as soon as a stock of hydrants comes into the Kekiki yard, they'll get them up here as fast as they can.
Well, then I guess I need to call them myself. Okay, thank you.
Okay, could you, Chief Chelios, could you do us a favor? Because, um, here is one by my house, and I noticed they have a bag on it, and they have a warning or whatever. So some of them, they aren't putting bags on, so could you do us a favor and give the information that we did put it on our website?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, thank you, Ms. Sanders. Um, Ms. Mary Truss?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Mary Truss, and I live in University Park. And I brought something to your attention last, at the last board meeting, but I was not able to, uh, stay or find out, uh, what you did about it, whatever. But I'm here again to ask this board not to dispose of Regal Farm, and I'm here again to ask, well, I guess this would be a, um, an issue for the village manager. Uh, again, I'm here to ask that we do some, uh, work at Regal Farm. The house at Regal Farm Homestead is just very dirty and needs to be cleaned up. And, uh, but there, it can still be used, whereas people in the town, I know my organization have no parent to meet, you have to give the library a whole month's notice in order to use the library. We cannot use, uh, this place unless we're paying out an enormous amount of money. And we are a civic organization who are trying to do some things for the village here. So, uh, we're asking you, please, do not dispose of, and we're asking you, please, to actually start repair or doing, or trying to hire someone who has the ability to get a grant in here to help fix up and create some areas for the senior citizens, the tax-paying, voting, senior citizens to meet or to get together, and somewhere where we can have some kind of activities for the children in the village, other than just football, wrestling, baseball, and a little bit of cheerleading. But there is nothing else here, nothing for seniors, and nothing for the smaller children. So that is already land that is on here, and, uh, is being physically taken care of, or lack of being cared of, but is heated. So this is something that we can be used. Uh, last week, I needed a tomato, and my husband had to drive all the way to Route 30 to get me a tomato. But within less than a block, I can buy liquor, alcoholic beverages, at four different places, all with less than a block. We need to do something about this. This is a sad commentary in the village, in my village of University Park.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Truss, unfortunately, are those managers out of vacation, but one thing that I agree with you, we are going to look to do something with the Regal Farm, and as I said before I got on this board years ago, that this place, Ms. Nun, did get it as a historical site. I even offered to pay for the silo area, and I offered to even pay the membership for the historical site membership, but nothing was ever done. Uh, it's always been appreciating, I, you know, it just fell apart it shouldn't have, and people should have been held accountable, but we should have worked on it, and we are, we're not going to, I know, uh, village manager had discussed something about selling it, and why, the board said no. So we are going to work on that, and hopefully it will help, it will help our residents. And as far as our children, we got some really good news on something else that we're going to be providing for the children, and I spoke to a resident this week, as a matter of fact, yesterday, for yesterday, and trying to get more events coming in the village, because we had a lot going a long time ago, the Hundred Man Association, the things of that nature, but for some reason that fell apart, but we will try to restore. The Human Services Rescue Committee has come up with a calendar to do certain things around the village, and I do know they do have a senior citizen committee, but there are a lot of things we can do collaboratively, so we have all these committees, there's people that are born and happy to join to help us with this idea. I just met a lady this evening in my office that's eager to come and share ideas, so we're going to do better because we know better. So we hear what you're saying, and we're going to try to accommodate that.
Oh, and can I please just dispel the rumor? Uh, the Community Block Club is a civic organization, and we are not a pact, we're not a political organization. We're about doing, uh, something good, anything we can do good for the, uh, for the village. It encompasses the whole village.
Right.
And for those of us who are here and have been here a long time, uh, we are going to endeavor in some things like writing the history. We have no historical society here. I know this exceeds many of your tenure here, but there are some of us really care about this, and some of us have stories to tell that, uh, will help here. And I ask that you not try to hinder me or anyone in our organization from trying to do good in this village. It's just like Martin Luther King says, "What have you done for your village for the good?" And those words haunt me, so it's something that I can do, yeah, for our village and as a collective group, uh, the Community Block Club, we're doing it. Little by little, we are doing it. And I thank you so much for listening to me, but, uh, when we went out to get our signatures and talk to the people about that historical society, who I know probably more than you know about that, because I have researched it and I have lived it, and my children have lived Regal Farmstead. There are many other properties around here that can be sold before the barn gets sold. And I thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you, but we're not going to sell the barn.
I don't think so.
No, we're not going to sell. The board has decided on that. Thank you so much. Appreciate your comments. Um, Ms. Deborah Strout.
Good e- excuse me. Good evening, Madam Mayor, the board, all present, all viewing. Uh, it's a rough night tonight, but it's a good thing that we all made it safe and sound, and hopefully travel mercy is returning. Uh, first off, I want to extend condolences to the Commissioner Hook's family from Police and Fire Commission. For those that do or don't know, um, I know his services are starting, uh, tonight or tomorrow?
Tonight and tomorrow.
Tonight and tomorrow. Thank you. Okay. Uh, just want to extend condolences to his family. Secondly, last board meeting, there was discussion on different committees and commissions as far as when they would meet, because I remember trustee Wilson trying to make sure she got the right Thursday. Uh, when will that calendar be out for those scheduled?
As a matter of fact, it's on our agenda tonight.
Oh, okay, thank you. I guess I should have read it. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I was trying to rush you in because I was cold.
No problem.
Okay. But, um, also, and not to sound crude, rude, or anything else that may be taken as, it's not a negative comment for me, um, I am finally at a point where I feel like, since I have worked with the Fire Department, Code Enforcement Department, Police Department, and graduated the Citizens Police Academy, um, I'm willing to throw my services. You speak of volunteerism all the time. So at whatever point, if I need to fill out an application on Monday, I don't have a problem doing that. But I'd like to assist in volunteering on the Police and Fire Commission. So if there's anything else I need to do different than fill out an application, let me know.
But there, just to let you know, there are people still pending, and I know Mr. Hook's did expire, but the commission had already had someone in line for that one. So I don't know, when they expire, I'm more than likely to, uh, request you.
Okay.
So there's some openings, but they do, she does have, she called me tonight as a matter of fact, for someone that was waiting, that was exactly, there's two people that were waiting, but that couldn't put them on the committee at that time, commission at that time.
Yeah.
Because of, it's only certain amount we have.
Okay, I'm glad you mentioned that, because that clears up my thoughts from when I attended the meeting back in, I want to say October, September, October. And, um, I was trying to apply then, so I didn't know that there were others pending.
Well, at that time, we had a full commission. Maybe somebody was out, but we are not without one person now that, unfortunately, Commissioner Hook's passed.
Yes.
That's the only opening, and she did have, so I think she had three people she wanted to put on there.
Okay.
So, but no worries, still put the application in, so they can put that in in case someone's time expired and they're not interested any longer. That's how she works with.
Okay, all right, because his, uh, once I heard about his passing, it jogged my memory. I'm a senior. It jogged my memory. So I'm like, oh, that's right, what did I put in applications for, whatever committees and commissions? So thank you very much for letting me know that.
Okay, thank you. Okay. There's no others, so we will proceed with our, excuse me, um, action items, unfinished, excuse me, unfinished business is done, new business, first, second, and third, meeting in the ordinance, receding chapter 1450 of Title 14 of the Codified Ordinance of the Village of University Park, Bill of the County of Illinois pertaining to flood damage prevention, and adopting chapter 1452 pertaining to stormwater management as its replacement, and its replacement. Is there a motion? So moved by trustee Wilson? Second. Second by trustee Brooks. Comments, concerns, seeing that this was on the cow, we kind of eliminated that, but there are, there are additional ones? Hearing none. Roll call.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Brooks?
Both sides.
Trustee Payton?
Aye.
Mary Truss?
Both sides.
Madam Mayor, that's board minutes, O 2019 dash zero two.
Thank you very much, trustee John. F 2B, motion to approve annual meeting schedule of the board and trustees, committee and commissions. Is there a motion or change, their motion? So moved by trustee Brooks, second.
Second.
Second by trustee Wilson. Um, any comments, changes, modifications, which we can do at any other, any time?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Regarding the Finance Committee?
Yes, sir.
A couple of things. One is, I think the question mark should be removed before the joint board meetings.
Okay.
Um, and the, uh, January 16th board meeting at this point should be taken off since.
Is it all January?
Yeah, since we passed January. And the Finance Committee voted at the last Finance Committee meeting not to have a meeting in December.
Okay.
That should be removed.
Remove, okay. Any others?
I'd like to amend that portion of it. There are no other amendments.
Okay. Um, okay, motion to amend the changes, any others before we say that? Any other amendments? Is there something Human Services Specialty Nests that you guys? No, it's fixed, okay. Um, as far as the Economic Development Commission, I talked to the President, and she's waiting to, she's getting back at me on that. Okay. Hearing that, I like a motion to mo- the modifications that trustee Milton Payton instead.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Wilson, second.
Second.
Second by trustee Wilson. Um, any comments, changes, modifications, which we can do at any other, any time?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Regarding the Finance Committee?
Yes, sir.
Um, a couple of things. One is, I think the question mark should be removed before the joint board meetings.
Okay.
Um, and the, uh, January 16th board meeting at this point should be taken off since.
Is it all January?
Yeah, since we passed January. And the Finance Committee voted at the last Finance Committee meeting not to have a meeting in December.
Okay.
That should be removed.
Remove, okay. Any others?
I'd like to amend that portion of it. There are no other amendments.
Okay. Um, okay, motion to amend the changes, any others before we say that? Any other amendments? Is there something Human Services Specialty Nests that you guys? No, it's fixed, okay. Um, as far as the Economic Development Commission, I talked to the President, and she's waiting to, she's getting back at me on that. Okay. Hearing that, I like a motion to mo- the modifications that trustee Milton Payton instead.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Wilson, second. Is there a second?
Second. Well, I moved her, she said.
She's second.
Okay.
Second. Okay. Roll call on the modifications.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Brooks?
Both sides.
Trustee Payton?
Aye.
Mary Truss?
Both sides. Now, motion to approve the schedule of the community commissioners' meetings. Their motion?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Wilson, second.
Second.
And trustee Brooks? Sorry, we can't move it. Oh, yeah, we sure did, I'm sorry. We sure did.
We should have washed the door.
Who was missing?
Yes.
That's what we did. Okay.
Then finish the motion, I thought you were ready for motion.
Right. So?
We have person, yes.
Right, okay. Roll call.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Brooks?
Both sides.
Trustee Payton?
Aye.
Mary Truss?
Both sides. Thank you. Um, F 2C, appointments to the Human Services Specialty Nests Committee. Their motion, please. To leave the farm. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Marv, I'm sorry. Ms. Marv, now. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Wilson, second.
Second.
By trustee Brooks. Comments, concerns, questions? Hearing none. Roll call.
One person, Madam Mayor, just to be clear, she is an associate member.
Yes, ma'am. Associate member, voting no.
Trustee Brooks?
Aye.
Trustee Brooks?
Both sides.
Trustee Payton?
Aye.
Mary Truss?
Aye. Appointment, go, sorry. Okay. Uh, F 2D, bills payable. I read for you tonight, bills payable. Bills payable, attached here approval is listings of general operating expenses for the village of University Park that occurred on December 11th through January 22nd, 2019. Journal funds, $409,798.67. Debit service fund, $500. Road and bridge, $877.08. Town center funds, $818.97. Capital project funds, $85,985.12. Payroll, $5,421.21. Co- link. Okay. Um, totally, $503,401.05. Did you see the note taken at the bottom? It caps, and everyone read that?
System error.
Yes, system error. Um, one was, one, that was listed twice. Okay. Roll call?
Are you made, is there a motion?
There's motion, I'm sorry. So moved. Moved by trustee Brooks? Second. Second by trustee Payton. Questions, concerns, comments?
Very quickly, uh, I know manager Payton is not here. I'm looking at, um, the tire repair for 13-2.
Is that? Check number?
Oh, I'm sorry. Check number 103, 218. Is, is that for?
Spud.
Is that for all new, if, 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 all new tires, or, it's kind of pricey?
That's for the Expedition.
Oh.
That's for the Expedition, so, um, and there was also a rim that needed to be repaired.
Okay.
So that's why it came out to that.
The one that was put back into the fleet for you, that Expedition that was back turned?
Correct.
Okay.
The one that is in the fleet, yes.
Okay.
So there, uh, we had to purchase some tires and also repair a rim.
And then the, um, Sutton Ford, the 13-dash-one, that was ma- that must have been major work.
Yes, that vehicle is up over 10,000 miles, so it is starting to deprecate.
Right. Uh, that, that one was, uh, $2,022. Which, which further my, uh?
Vehicle number 302.
302.
60.
Yeah, 260. Which further my, uh, my suggestion that we need to?
103.
Yeah, 103, 260. Which furthers my, my argument that we probably need to hurry up and get into leasing, because this is pricey. Uh, this is almost like $3,000 for one, for two vehicles. Um, also, I, I, if you don't know, you don't know, but Chief, or, um, Chief Chelios, she wouldn't so happen to know, Montana and Welch, I can't find two payments. I see the one where we, we paid them in August, then we jumped down to November, unless someone here can help me, I'm, I'm missing September and October.
I answered that question. Um, also, there's, I mean, I go, Mayor, I mean, I know that these bills had developed a lot to do with the trials. Yeah. We had it in September, but as far as, like, I don't have the actual invoices. Right. Um, I will request for the record that we get a copy of invoices, because on that call and asked a question as well, it said because those back payments, they had received, uh, payments in August and of the trials that we have, which I have a question about. Anyone else have before I say anything else?
Uh, no, Mayor. Just, uh, yeah, that, that was it. I just wanted to make sure, because I think I was very specific. The village manager and I did speak, is that if anything, we kept payments up on was, uh, our attorneys and our health insurance. In my book, I just felt those were the two priorities, because that seemed to be impacting, uh, the village the most when it comes to racking up on fees, but other than that, I'm pretty content with what I see.
Any others?
For August, is it? So for the August, is that just for the month of August?
I don't think that's, again, I don't have the invoices in front of it, I don't think that's just for one month. I think that should pass, though, pass new, pay a specific maximum time. Yes.
Is it, um, if we vote on this tonight, can I get an itemized for, for August, for that amount for one month?
One itemized for August, absolutely.
Yeah.
You have the invoices?
The finance.
Oh, the finance, okay, yeah. And you should, that's, that's normally, that's the question or the concern, I've always said that we need to have a breakdown for attorney fees, and I would request that again, that the board gets a breakdown for attorney fees, so we can match it up, it makes sense.
One last question?
Yes.
For Ansel and Glink, check number 103188, is that the final payment?
No, that's the beginning of the, the village did have an arrangement to pay the back payments.
They can't hear you. I'm sorry.
The village had made an arrangement, um, 2016, I think, to start making monthly payments on the debt that they owed Ansel and Glink.
Okay.
They had not received payments, anything in the last year or so. So manager Payton did speak with Stuart Knight, and made an arrangement to begin paying up monthly payments.
I'd like to see an itemized copy of those bills and then the payments we've made for them since they left the village, because, okay, if, if, if the board can get a copy of that, I'd like that.
Yeah, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, just to clarify, here on the Montana and Welch invoices, uh, here is, is for September, October, November, um, another one for December, two for December, and one, another for October, so that's the reason why the bill was so high.
Right, that, and not mention the other, oh, litigations that we had them to attend to?
Right.
Um, I saw we can get a breakdown of that, but then Ansel and Glink, that's just been haunting us for a long time. That was really a bad thing.
I think that's, that must be the final payment, because their payments were $10,000.
Oh, yeah, they were, they were $10,000, and I, and I totally, one last one. I totally agree. Disagree with that. Um, this settlement, who was doing, oh, yeah, right here, was any, asked a question about the Roach Association settlement thing? That was a question that I have. I'm sorry.
I do know who they is, it is, the part, he's the attorney for a settlement with one of the police.
Okay. Oh, that's, 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 oh, yeah, I remember that one. Okay. All right, also, I made a request, um, he's not here to answer this, I made a request for any money that's removed from the TARP, that the village, I mean, the trustees get a copy of all usage of that money, and then a statement from the bank showing the balance. We need to know with each check, any money that's taken from that TARP, we need to know what we paid and what the balance is. So I'll just deal with that. The chief, I'm sure you'll give that to him once he returns. Other than that, any other questions, concerns, or comments?
Yes.
Hello, sir. Hearing none. Roll call on bills payable.
Trustee Wilson?
Epstein.
Trustee Brooks?
Both sides.
Trustee McMuller?
Both sides.
Trustee Payton?
Aye.
Mary Truss?
Both sides. At this time, I'd ask for a report from our officers. Reports?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Board of Trustees and residents. Um, in the Police Department, it's been, most of it's been vocalized already, you know, we've been, um, trying to keep up with what's going on, although we are making some progress, I just want to assure everybody that, um, we are working diligently to make sure that we are being visible, um, and vigilant as far as, um, keeping the community safe. Um, the officers are out and about, they are enforcing the ordinances, and the community, you know, we want to make sure that, uh, they are aware that we are here for the community. Okay, so, and if there's any questions, feel free to contact us, contact me, and I'll make sure that, uh, whatever needs to be addressed is addressed.
Um, deputy chief, I would like you to also explain, I did tell the audience a lot of, well, on information about the meetings that the South River Regional Light Mirrors Association has, and you attended, what, could you explain what that was about, because I had you and chief Payton attend, we?
Well, the one was canceled that I went to. That one was canceled. Um, I didn't get the invite for the second one, I think they canceled, something came up with that, or else I believe the manager may have gone.
Okay, I know he did come to one that I was at.
Okay.
And.
Because I was invited to the one, but that one was canceled.
Right, okay. But the purpose of that is for all the mayors, all the mayors got together, because we all know that there's a serious issue in, in the different villages, and people running from one place to another, so all the chief of police, and I have invited deputy chief to be a member of that organization.
know that there's a serious issue in, in the different villages and people running from one place to another. So all the chief of police, and I have invited deputy chief to be a member of that organization as well. South Borough mayors are doing it. In case someone leaves, you're a commits a crime in your village, you're to contact the nearest village and let them know, okay, he just left Madison, oh, he's going towards Richardson Park or whatever, whatever. So we've been working on that since the summer to let everyone know. Every village is working together on this committee for safety. And it's, I think it's a pretty good idea, and I told everyone that we suggest to have drones and anyone that has the ring or they have the nest. I have one. That's what I call automated neighborhood watch. So if you would like to share that, we're going to have a meeting here in the board meeting about just that issue of safety and how we can work together to the safety of this village, together, one another. If you're willing to share whatever you have or if you see something, as you say, say something. And the person, just to let you know, also, the person did not live here. The man had various addresses. Am I correct, deputy chief?
Yes.
They had on television saying, University Park, no, wrong. He did not live here. He lived in various places.
Correct. One of his relatives actually was, um, new to the community here.
Right, so that was, I wish they would get on the news and correct that. But every village, every town, every city being hit, Chicago, just received ten million dollars just to their police department and they have murders every day. And I know that's upsetting to them, but it is what it is. I wish we had the solution to solving crime, but no one has that unfortunately. But as much as we can work together, if you want to come together and share your technical information, if you have ring or a nest or any other type of device and you were willing to say, okay, I'll text you because on my ring, I notify people, what's, what I see in the door, I notify my neighbor that did not have ring and asked her and I called her and asked her, did you have a package delivered? She said, no. I said, well, someone's at your door such, such time and I'd let you know right away. So if we want to do that, it's just like, it's another normal app that will help people communicate with one another. So we're going to try to hold something in here for on safety and any ideas that anyone have, please come when we can post it and I appreciate it. And thank you every, every day that you did because your life is, is a dangerous thing. Okay, our fire department, please?
Good evening, everyone. Two quick things to update. I am very happy and proud to say that our Keep the Rethread program over the holiday season was a great success. No fires in the village related to Christmas decorations or space heaters or Christmas trees being too close to fireplaces or anything like that. So thank you to the public for, uh, following that safety message and taking care of your homes, which it helps us do our job when everyone pitches in like that. And to follow up on the, the fire hydrant issue, I understand the concern, uh, about getting those fixed, but everyone, uh, can rest a little easier knowing that we have backup plans in place if we find that the hydrant system doesn't work. Uh, we can call other resources through our Mutulate network and, uh, we can fight fires if we find that a fire hydrant doesn't work.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
Yes.
Good evening, madam mayor, board of trustees.
Good evening.
And our public works department, as you know, this is our busy time of the season. We're in the process now of, uh, cleaning our streets as we speak. Uh, our main concern is making sure that not just our residents, but, uh, fellow, uh, people that, that drive through our, our, our city, our village are safe. And our number one concern is to make sure our streets are as clean as we can get them. Uh, uh, to make sure that if their lights are off, to make sure that you report to Department of Public Works at five three four four eight two three. And, uh, we will get to the lights as quickly and as properly as we can. Due to the season right now, our main focus is making sure that our streets are safe and that there's no, uh, tree branches or any sort of things that's hanging to be a hazard for anyone. So right now, this is my first board meeting. I would like to thank the mayor, trustee Theo Brooks, and just the whole board for, for having faith in me. You know, I've been, uh, a worker for Public Works for fourteen years and, you know, I just, uh, know that hard work pays off. And this is part of that payoff. And I would just like to thank the residents that know me and the board that truly knows me that I put a hundred percent in everything I do for this village. Because if you don't love a village, if you don't love what you do, then you need to get out of it. And I love what I do. And I would like.
And we really, really, really appreciate you stepping up, taking charge, done a marvelous job. I got a lot of compliments. Our roads were, I didn't get one complaint. I told the board, we got one complaint and it was very, very minor. And you went on to that right away when I called you and you did it. And I'm just so grateful for your heart and what you've done. And it proves that hard work does pay off, but we are really happy. And I also want to thank you for responding to the email from ComEd. Um, he will be, Mr. Darrell will be, I'm sorry, last, excuse me, I'm sorry. That they are having a, excuse me, a meeting and he's happy to announce they will as soon as the weather lets up. ComEd, we begged a long time ago, we were up in Schaumburg, this is a few months ago. And they have a new supervisor or leader for that. And I told University Park, not his lights forever. So they're not only going to put us new lights, they're going to put the LED lights and they noticed that, which he's going to do a count and count other places that is needed is much darker and they're now going to give us more lights and that will be a pre grant that they're going to give us. So he's taking care of that and just jumping all over the place and he's doing a great job and we really appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, that's it. Board, anyone on the board like to comment?
Um, just to, just to let the public know that on the twenty-second, I certified to the ballot in the counties of Will and Cook, all of the candidates who will be on the April second election. We have four candidates for mayor, two for clerk, and eight for village trustee. I will be posting that list on our website as soon as I talk to Niva. So everybody will know who the candidates are.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson.
Uh, good evening, good evening, everyone. Condolences to Commissioner, um, Hooks' family and, and close friends and residents who knew him well. My heart goes out, a lot of losses. Just want to remind everybody that Human Services Special Events does, um, is, look at the calendar. We made sure all the dates were corrected at the last board meeting. We welcome volunteers. So if you're looking for a committee and that one is full, please join us, Ms. Stroud. We do a lot of activities with the youth and the more seniors and the more hands we have, the easier it is. So if you'd like to sign up or volunteer, um, get it, the list of the chairperson is on the website, phone number, contact number, or contact me if you're interested in helping. Once the calendar, we do have a calendar of every month of events that will be happening. If you just want to participate in one event, we welcome that one event. And all, all, all are welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just remember to be safe if you, um, there's, there's warming centers, that, um, deputy chief, I don't know if you mentioned it, but everybody knows you can go to the police department, um, for a warming center, the fire department for a warming center. And then if you see animals out, there's homeless animals as well, um, you can contact the, the police department and they will help and take them to the shelter. So if you see the animals.
That's why it's on, that's why it's on Bill's bail. Yep. Okay, uh, set timer for three minutes. No, two minutes. Okay. Um, this, this is the first time we, uh, got a chance to speak since the new year. We'd like to say happy new years to everyone, although we had to meet another cow, uh, or the cow meeting. Um, happy new years and that, uh, indeed, I'm glad that we're starting off on the right foot. The next is for Commissioner Hooks for those arrangements. I know that this is probably going to air afterwards, but we will have the fire department and the police department there as well as the village officials to show respect because this would be, uh, indeed, an official that passed away in office. It's going to be at New Hope Church. Uh, it is at forty-seven hundred West Main. Uh, that is Will Center and Main Street right here in, uh, Moni. Um, and the services, uh, the wake is at ten and the services start at eleven. Uh, however, he will, the burial service is going to be in Evergreen Park. So, uh, tomorrow is indeed going to be a busy day. Uh, Public Works, last but not least, Darrell, thank you. I'm proud of, I mean, for those who've seen that last, um, snowfall, actually, which was the first major snowfall, I mean, I'm sorry, I, I, there's no words to express that how your guys cleaned up, you know, University Park. And once again, you know, not talking about anyone else, but I would say you, your guys were better than Moni when we went to church that Sunday and Crete. Because what I do is I'll slide right on around and say, okay, Moni looking tacky. Then go over here to Crete and say, yeah, y'all can't do nothing with us. And then come back home and say, good job, okay? So thank you and everyone just be patient because he is out there, his crew is out there almost like twelve hours, you know, um, you know, give them their respect. Also, Ms. Niva, I know it's a shock, but I want to say everyone on Martin Luther King Day, I per, I love when, uh, when I was younger, they would broadcast, you know, the civil rights movement, everything to teach us and, and something is going wrong because they don't broadcast it no more. I turned on Channel Four and I loved it, Ms. Niva. It was beautiful. I can't say nothing more than, but great things about Niva. Just everyone, please, if you're watching Channel Four and your neighbor has Comcast, tell them to watch Channel Four. Niva is doing great things and that day, I mean, it just touched me that she keeps University Park on point. I don't even know what you're going to do for Black History Month, but whatever it is, I know it's going to be better than regular TV.
Yes.
So thank you so much, everyone. God bless. Thank you. Trustee.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First of all, I would like to give condolences to, uh, the Hooks family and a great loss. We all are going to miss the commissioner, uh, number two. Uh, it sounds, it sounds great, uh, Director Darrell. Wow, acting director Darrell, man. You look good up there too, man. I saw your profile on the cable station, that looked good, right? Um, first of all, I would like to say, oh, you, uh, thank you because your guys wait, no, they don't wake me up because I'm up already, but I noticed that, uh, the shuttles are rolling and I appreciate that. The village appreciates that and, um, it, it really helps for public safety all the way around, you know, fire department and the police department. Definitely, uh, grateful to you and all of that you do right now. And I thank, uh, Mr. Trustee Brooks for being a liaison and, and I know definitely you won't let it slide with, uh, Public Works at all. So I appreciate that. I appreciate your, uh, wonderful help. And I thank all of the residents who come out and brave this cold today. And I really appreciate you guys for showing up and, uh, and I see a candidate or two in the audience, but, um, I wish and I thank everybody, uh, I wish them a happy weekend, a safe weekend tonight. And, uh, to my partner in crime is, uh, Niva Hooks, I mean, Niva, and, and she's doing a great job in, um, at, at the village cable station. And, uh, we have a lot of things that are going on right now that she's working on and you'd be surprised that, uh, cable station is moving in the right direction and our village is moving in the right direction. I, I appreciate all of the, um, uh, all the, uh, cable, um, stories that, that she tells every, every day and I appreciate that. So, uh, I'll talk to everybody later and I wish you guys a very safe weekend, okay?
Thank you. Trustee.
Yeah, first, I'd like to thank all of the board members that came out for the joint, uh, finance committee, uh, board meeting last Wednesday. Yeah, congratulations, uh, to Darrell Piper. And, uh, Ms. Jenkins, a wonderful job at the cable station and I mean that from my heart.
That means a lot.
And, uh, just condolences again to the Hooks family. It's, uh, it's a sad thing when anybody dies. It's even worse when, uh, somebody is really trying to do good in the hood. Somebody's trying to steal my phrase, by the way. Doing good in the hood. And I gave one of the former superintendents for the school district that award, the Milton Peyton first ever good, doing good in the hood award. Gave him a plaque, actually. So, um, but, uh, again, you know, condolences to the family.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight as well. Um, I condolences to Hooks family, talking to his wife. She was very grateful how the village has reached out to and the board and our staff and we're, we're going to miss him tremendously. It's hard to say goodbye, it's so true. And we're going to miss him for his diligent work that he did on our commission and his devotion there. I would also like to, I love this village. I love, love, love it. And we've been here this long, I didn't care as much for it. You guys are doing a wonderful job, seeing upper mobility is great. Thank you so much. Although they didn't want to take it, he still, he said, mayor, we're, we're okay. I made him come to my house and get money for coffee and donuts. It was so bad that night. And our police officers, I can't, you know, I look at Law and Order all the time, Chicago PD, and I'm telling you, you guys, it's a dangerous world out here for our police officers and we can't thank you enough for what you do. And firemen, I don't like fire. So that's another thing that it's a scary thing as well. So everything that our staff do, but I want to do a special shout out to Cecilia Kelly. Um, she has been just unbelievable in our finance department. She does so much. She assists our clerk and clerk D. Jones has been overwhelmed and I want to give special shout out to her because she's just been doing so much lately. And I thank her for her knowledge and keeping us straight and calling us, spanking us and telling us what we should and should not do. But our clerk has a lot of work to do and we really appreciate the knowledge that she has because she is like a second lawyer and I appreciate her so much for so many things. And the staff and Niva, I really, really appreciate you. And you guys just don't know what's getting ready to happen at our cable station. It's going to come back when Ms. Mohammed was there, the things that she used to do. Niva has looked through those files and she see the things that was done and that's dear to my heart as well because trustee McMullen and I and Travis was on there and then, Milton Peyton, I missed those biscuit meetings we used to have and then finding people for being late. I remember all those good days and I really, really appreciate what she's doing. And I condolences also, I, I don't know how far it is or where the status is with Mr. Griffin. They said that he was ill and my heart goes out in prayers for him as well. But the things that we're doing on our cable station, we're coming back up, we're united, but I'm not going to give away the secret. So we'll get that together soon and it'll come out and you're going to be really, really happy. So just keep us in prayer, keep looking up at University Park. I'm really, really proud of what we do and the things that we do. And I thank you. Ms. Keisha? For keeping us straight with the board. We really appreciate that because she's really, really on top of everything with that. So all the volunteers, you don't have to do it, but we appreciate when you do do it. Work together as a whole. That makes the difference. No division. Please, we got enough of that on top of the house. And pray, I pray much for those federal workers that are going through. And he told us now, three weeks, they're going to do a temporary open for three weeks and then we don't know what's going to happen from there. So keep this country in your prayers. The Bible says that we were born the most elite in the last days and I really believe we live in that. People are just unbelievable. But we're still going to stay hopeful and prayerful and I thank you all for this quick meeting tonight and I ask for, I'm sorry, trustee J. Peyton.
I, I want to say something about the website.
Oh, yes.
I would, I would agree that Dee is, I don't know how you do it, but in, uh, working with the website, Dee is just outstanding in giving us information, the agenda that it's. just outstanding, giving us information, the agenda and that, and so, um, you know, of course, we have Facebook, and now we're on Nextdoor, and there have been some comments on Nextdoor about finding the agendas and things like that, and I just wanted to put it on record, because Dee takes care of what she does, and, uh, she, she put it on there, I will post it, um, but the, on the website, www.university-park-il.com, there is a section on there called Agenda Postings, and on the Agenda Posting section, it is, uh, as she sends it to me, by finance, by public hearing, by mayor and board of trustees, and recently that page has been revamped, where you can get the agenda packet, the extra packet, the agenda, the extra packet, and now you can actually see the video of the, the agenda goes, goes, goes aside, uh, coincides with it, so it's just one straight line over, and then you push the arrow down for each individual, um, Human Services Special Events, Finance, Plan Commission, so if any of the residents ever want to see an agenda or anything, it is there, um, it's actually in two places, because the new change didn't happen until after the first of the year, but those things are there, and they are visible for everyone to see, um, because she sends it, and I have to do what she says, so, so I just wanted to point that out, to try to drive as much traffic to the website as possible, because of smart alerts and things like that, um, I've gotten different feedback on, on things that people want to see, and, and information and resources they want to see, so, um, you can find it all in one stop, and if it's not there, all you have to do is just send an email, and I'll try to get it on there.
That's what I apologize for, I wanted to bring that up, someone came to our office today to compliment our website, they were really, really, really impressed with it, and it's not an off-the-shelf type thing, it's, we're designing it, I like the drones, drones that viewed it and looked at it, it's really good, and hopefully, we can, we're gonna put the pictures of these committees in the head of the party, everybody.
Yes, it will be a, a picture page, like Pinterest, um, Deborah Stroud has asked me many times for pictures, you can just click it, and then the pictures are there, I don't know about putting labels or things like that, village, things, I gotta figure that part out, but it was something else about, um, that I wanted to say about the website, as far as the, the company revised, I do not know of a better company to work with, they, I could pick up the phone right now, and they'll walk me through what I need to, so, the company that was chosen by, um, Darrell Bolton and, uh, the village manager has been an awesome experience, you know, a novice like myself that didn't know how to do it, they, they have really provided me a lot of support, and, and, um, really helped out with that, so, that's it.
Thank you so much. But then, I'll ask for the chairman, just to be close a second. Right, trustee Brooks, have a good evening and a safe one, thank you all. Roll call. Trustee Brooks.
Aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Hold side.
Hold side.
Aye. Aye, thank you.